Yes, and thank you very much for your attendance to our study group on the laws of secrets. So this is excerpts from the preface. "With the advancement of science, people say there's nothing that cannot be explained in this modern civilization, but how can that be true? Our lives are full of the unknown. I want you to awaken more and more to the wonders of living in this world as humans." Thank you, Master Yeho Kabab. Yes, so in this modern society, people are believing science instead of religion. So that is one major flaw of the world. But Master is saying, no, 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 science has a limit. But what awaits us in the next coming age is a new religion which can tell us about the spirit world and also the space world. So today's topic is about the world of unknown, the wonders of this world. So now we are going to watch the video about the laws of the laws of universe in Happy Science. So let's watch it.
Are we alone in the universe? Space, it is indeed a mysterious place. Master Akawa, who founded Happy Science, has been researching this field since the 1980s. And since 2010, he began doing space readings in preparation of the upcoming space age. The secrets of unidentified flying objects, or more commonly known as UFOs, have been revealed along with the reincarnation cycle of beings and even planets and stars. The universe is not unrelated to you. In fact, it has a very close relationship to each and every one of you. Now, let's discuss more about this universe. Firstly, what actually is a space reading? Master Akawa, using his spiritual channeling abilities, calls forth the soul of a person now living on Earth when they were an alien in the distant past or a space person as referred to in Happy Science. This soul enters the body of Master Akawa. Then a dialogue can begin and questions can be asked by the interviewers. Actually, amongst those living on Earth today, not all of us originated from here. Of course, there are human beings who have been created by God on this earth, but there are also beings who have been invited to come to live on Earth and to become Earthlings. It has been revealed by Master Akawa that thirty to forty percent of people's souls actually originated from outer space. Perhaps this could mean you too. It has been revealed that space people have been visiting this earth throughout history but keeping away from public and crowded places to avoid being discovered. However, Master Akawa, through his space readings, has uncovered hundreds of different species. In fact, his research has discovered around five hundred have already visited us. So what kind of space people are visiting our earth? Let me introduce some more info as published in our many space reading books. Firstly, we have space people from Vega. Vega is located at a distance of twenty-five light years from the earth. Some of the characteristics of space people from Vega or Vagans is the ability to transform themselves, to be able to read the minds of others and acquire wisdom. They can act as a mirror and can transform their appearance according to the image you have in your mind. They have a neutral gender in addition to male and female and have come to Earth to learn the laws of origin of the beginning. We also have space people from the Pleiades. Pleiades is located about four hundred light years from the earth. Their main focus is on beauty, culture, and prosperity. They look similar to Earthlings like the Scandinavian type who have blond hair and blue eyes and some even possess magical abilities and healing power. Next, we have space people from Andromeda. Andromeda is a galaxy that is about 2.3 million light years away from the Milky Way containing our solar system. It is very large and the number of stars is estimated to be about twice the Milky Way. This galaxy has the goal of establishing cosmic justice and was created by El Cantare, the god of the earth. In this galaxy, there are species that resemble bears, leopards, and jaguars. They have a highly advanced culture and it is said that there are planets or stars that are planning strategies to protect the universe. They are fighting against beings with evil intent in the universe and are contributing to the galactic peace. Then we have reptilians. It is from the Magellanic Nebula that inhabits many of this kind of species. The distance from the earth is about one hundred and sixty thousand light years from the large Magellanic Nebula. Reptilians tend to be a very competitive species that can be ferocious in nature with excellent scientific technology. Their core principles are evolution and progress. When Earth's civilization flourishes, reptilians appear in large numbers to stimulate dramatic change and evolution. Reptilians tend to have a negative reputation for causing conflict, but some actually have faith and have devoted themselves to God and to serve El Cantare. Centaurus is a constellation inhabited by many different kinds of space people. There is a species from Alpha Centauri that values spirituality and faith, but also other space people that value science. These two species had conflict and those that value spirituality and faith left their planet in a huge fleet of ships. Meanwhile, Beta was completely colonized by reptilians. So we have revealed some of the different varieties of space people. How was it? Do you believe they have been visiting us? And perhaps even living amongst us now? Perhaps you yourself feel some connection to life somewhere else in the universe? The gateway to the space age is now upon us and Happy Science is leading the way with information that not even NASA has, such as secrets on the moon, the principle of UFO navigation revealed in our space reading books. So now is the time to tune your heart to the universe. When you accept this new common sense, you will be able to connect to the secrets of this universe. And remember, we are not alone in this universe.
Yes, thank you very much. So what is unique to, what is unique in Happy Science is the laws of universe. You can learn about the space people and also UFO reading and also what's going on in the universe, not in the world, yeah, it's what's going on in the universe. And also it reveals to us, we might have been experiencing a space reincarnation as well. Maybe, let's say I have a past life as a Vagan from Vega, Planet Vega, or Andromeda Galaxy, or reptilians. So now I'm wearing a human body right now, but inside might be different. I might be a reptilian, I might be a Pleiades. So if you like something beautiful, you might come from, you might have come from Pleiades. So you have a certain tendency, but this tendency could be formed in the outer space. So now you are, maybe we might be living as Earthlings right now. So what is, yeah, this is what I like about Happy Science, we are very open to the universe. So now we are going to learn about the laws of secret, which is the... Today's topic is about the fourth chapter, "The Right Way to Conquer the Devils", and this topic is related to the laws of universe. So please be ready to read aloud one slide after. So, and here is a quote from the fourth chapter, "The Right Way to Conquer the Devils", and today's topic is Happy Science offers information through UFO reading and space people reading. So I want to read aloud one by one. So could you read aloud this sentence, Marianne?
In addition to publishing books on spiritual messages, we have started to publish books regarding UFO reading and space people reading in recent years. Some people may worry about what I am doing, but when I have come this far, there's no point in stopping. I have to reveal everything I should because I will run out of time if I hesitate.
Yes, so this is an introduction of today's topic. Thank you, Marianne. And Halbert Draxx, could you read aloud this sentence? Oh, Draxx, Ms. Draxx.
So I have decided to publish what must be published. Japan was lagging behind the field of UFO research, but it's now catching up and joining the advanced nation after Happy Science started to release various kinds of information.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Happy Science is providing the information to upgrade the information about UFO. Thank you, Draxx. And Halbert Christine, could you read aloud this slide?
In the spring of 2020, the Trump administration released three videos, video footage of an unidentified flying object or UFO that supposes the spirit extraterrestrial being. There should be a far greater number of records of UFO sighting in reality. Nevertheless, the US government has finally made an official announcement of the existence of this being.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Happy Science announced the existence of the extraterrestrial beings, but also America also affirmed the existence of extraterrestrial beings, I mean space people. How about, um, Jopim, could you read aloud?
Jopim?
Yes.
Okay, in Japan, on the other hand, the minister of the defense at the time said that something along the lines of, "I myself do not believe in UFOs, but now that the US has sufficiently approved them, we have asked the self-defense force, especially the earth's self-defense force, to collect as much everywhere as possible by taking photos of them."
Yes. Thank you, Jopim. Yes, so this is another topic about Japan. And how about James, could I ask you?
For example, Happy Science is also trying hard to present reference materials on this topic. It is impossible for life forms to exist only on Earth in this vast universe. There are trillions of galaxies that have star systems and countless planets that have similar environments to ours. There are many planets that satisfy the conditions under which life forms can be born.
Yes, thank you, James. And this is very important and this is rational thinking. And how about Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer. Ah, Jennifer. Jennifer.
Furthermore, we cannot necessarily, okay, furthermore, we cannot necessarily say that all planets are experiencing, okay, wait, wait, wait. Okay, furthermore... Furthermore, we cannot necessarily say that all planets are experiencing the same stages of development. At the same time, these should be planets that are more advanced and others that are still developing. Because life or nacces on Earth, it is likely that those from other advances planet are here to observe us.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Master is so passionate. Yes, we are also creatures in the universe, so why not other planets have other intellectual beings? And also there must be a difference in the level of civilization. And how about Ida? Thank you for coming and could I ask you to read aloud?
Okay, thank you, sir. Not all materialists disagree on this topic. Some say that they cannot completely deny the possibility of other humanoid existing in other parts of the universe. They think this could be possible according to the laws of evolution and if the environment permits, it's to prove this, we need to explain how these life forms travel that long distance. But the current level of science on Earth is not advanced enough to do so.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, another question might be how they travel to Earth. But you know, the science in modern society has a limit, so they can't figure out how they travel to Earth from all the way to the outer space. But in Happy Science, we notice that UFO or extraterrestrial beings are using the spirit world. And in the spirit world, there are no time and space. So if you go to the spirit world, you can travel to the past, you can travel to the future, and you can travel to a faraway place with just a second. So UFO research is also an important topic in modern society. So that is all from the laws of secret. So let's take up the important part. And yes, so we, Happy Science, have started to publish books regarding UFO reading and space people reading. And Master said he has a responsibility, I mean, he has to reveal everything I should because I will run out of time if I hesitate. So who can talk to space beings in UFO? But Master can talk to extraterrestrial being who is riding UFO, he can talk to them. So that's why we have so much information through UFO reading. And another point is that Trump administration also recognized the existence of extraterrestrial beings. So America and Happy Science are actually at the same, on the same page. So Master said it is impossible for life forms to exist only on Earth in this vast universe. There are trillions of galaxies that have star systems and countless planets that have similar environments to ours. So the Earth's environment is not unique actually if we think about the vast space of the universe. And he said there should be planets that are more advanced than others that are still developing. Because life form exists on Earth, it is likely that those from other advanced planets are here to observe us. Yes, so Happy Science has a mission to announce the existence of UFO extraterrestrial beings. So why do we have to do it? Here is a quote from the spiritual message from RA Gole. And RA Gole is a space being from, yeah, of course, after outer space, but also he is a space soul of Shakyamuni Buddha. So Shakyamuni Buddha's soul is very big. So another part of the Shakyamuni Buddha's soul is RA Gole. And this is a quote from the spiritual message, from his spiritual message. What we want to tell you is that while we as representatives relay all kinds of opinions from outer space, we are not asking you to worship us, to have faith in the one and only God. This is all we ask. So why, how come extraterrestrial beings came to Earth and observe us? Because they have a message to us, that is to believe in Lord El Cantare. And he said, "Their mystical eyes for outer space, for the universe that God has created, as well as their space brothers that God has created, will open for a first time when they come to believe in God. Just believe in the one and only God protecting this earth, then everything will be given to you." Yes, I think it will be done, it will be easier to believe in the existence of the extraterrestrial being if we believe in the fundamental God, I mean, yeah, God. So God created the whole universe and God created this planet and also God created humankind. So if we believe in God, we can believe that other terrestrial beings also exist, also exist. So yeah, so that's why RA Gole said, "Everything will be given to you if we believe in the one and only God who are protecting this earth." And this is a conclusion of today's topic. And this is a voice from somewhere in the universe. We just want to tell you that the earth is being targeted by evil forces. So please spread these words. The one and only faith is faith in El Cantare. The Lord God is connected to the universe. So another message they are delivering is now the earth is in crisis. Not only Communist Party, but also the atheism and materialistic thinking are over faith in science. So this earth is now in crisis. So that is one of the messages the space brothers also want to tell. But also here is an answer to the crisis. The one and only faith in El Cantare, the one and only faith is a faith in El Cantare. Why do we have to believe in El Cantare? Because he is connected to the universe. So once, no, that was it. The more we believe in Lord El Cantare, the more we can connect it to the universe. There are so many unknown things in the universe, but if we have just a belief in Lord El Cantare, everything will be revealed in front of us. So that is our mission of Happy Science Philippines and other Happy Science members. So now we are going to have thirteen minutes, maybe seven, five minutes to think about the meaning of this message. So now we are going to take, yes, we are going to contemplate what does it mean to us and what expectation do we have from Lord El Cantare as Happy Science member? Thank you for your guidance, Lord El Cantare. So today, uh, what did you learn, uh, from the contemplation? And here is a quote again, uh, with the advancement of seconds, uh, people say there is nothing that cannot be, that cannot be explained in this modern civilization. But how can that be true? Our eyes are full of the unknown. I want you to awaken more and more to the wonders of living in this world as humans. So humans has a history, has a, a soul history. We have a long, long history of, uh, millions of, or ten, uh, hundreds of millions of years. So, you know, uh, being a Earthlings is not just an option. We already experienced, uh, our lives as space people in the past. So now it's time for us to believe in the laws of universe uh, under the name of Lord El Cantare. This world is full of the unknown, so we have to have an open eyes to spirit world and also the world of, uh, universe. Hmm, so that is our mission, uh, of Happy Science Philippine. So let's spread, uh, a message from the outer space and a message from, uh, uh, spirit world and a message from the, the modern, no, the, yeah, the, the biggest savior, uh, Lord El Cantare. Yes, uh, thank you very much for your joining and I will stop the recording right now.